All righty, thank you for coming, folks. Hello. Um, we were just in executive session to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. The individual to be discussed in such an executive session shall be notified in writing by the public body at least forty hours prior to the post-executive session, provided, however, that notification may be waived on written agreement of the parties. Superintendent Director of Student Services. All righty, so, um, before we begin, I'd like to welcome our student representative from Student Council, Senior Lily Key. Welcome, Lily.
Lily, thank you.
And I'm so grateful that you're here, so thank you very much. Um, all right, at this time, we will take, um, public input, and we'll be taking it in person. From, from the next meeting on, we will take public input also on Zoom. Um, but since we stated that we would take it in person only tonight, um, we will take it in person. And, um, but on Zoom, it'll be, um, just like we did the other night, raise your hand, pop over, put your screen on, and we won't take chat, just for full disclosure. All right, at this moment, we will take public input. Citizens at this time may address the Committee on Items of School Business, not on the agenda. The committee will take such items under advisement without action at the meeting during which the item is presented. Matters pertaining to the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health of individuals will not be permitted. Chairperson will allow approximately three minutes. Do we have any public input at this time?
I'll go. Danielle Ortega.
The recording in progress.
So sorry. I didn't do, I'm so sorry, Danielle. So sorry. To ensure future lapses in judgment, do not harm our children, I ask Medfield to no longer celebrate Fan Folks Week. Pursuant to policy K E C E, public complaints, both the curriculum or its instructional materials, I've submitted a formal complaint regarding Fan Folks Week. Have it in your email. For the policy, I look forward to the school committee forming a committee to review this complaint, and I, I ask that those meetings be open to the public. I look forward to receiving a copy of the committee's report and recommendation in response to my complaint. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. I'm Mara Kemmer. I live at 12 Wichita Road. I have three children in the Medfield schools in second, fourth, and sixth grade. I'm a clinical social worker by training. I've spent just under twenty years working with adolescents and young adults, particularly on topics like reducing alcohol and other drug use, promoting healthy relationships, preventing sexual violence, promoting health and mental health in students. I'm here tonight to speak about concerns that I have over books being promoted to our middle and high school students. I want to start by saying that I think it's important, and our district clearly works hard to ensure that our students are exposed to a wide variety of books that reflect diversity in race, ethnicity, gender identity, and sexuality. I applaud these efforts. I support this, and this is not what my concern is about. What does concern me, for example, is a book called Flamer, a book available to the middle school population, a population like my son, who's eleven years old, and has a developmentally appropriate but limited understanding, exposure to, and grasp of context, concepts related to sexuality. The book includes explicit sexual and vulgar content. It's not coming-of-age content. It's been inclusive or teaching kids how to become comfortable in their own skin, how to tolerate. It's doing nothing but teaching kids how to be ratchet. It's over-sexualizing kids, normalizing things like pornography and bullying, where the data unequivocally shows these kind of things result in really concrete harms for our kids. In my experience working with adolescents and young adults, I can say there's been almost nothing more insidious or damaging than early regular exposure to graphic and gratuitous sexual content. It contaminates the development of healthy, positive sexual relationships in young people. Whether you've agreed with anything that I've said, I think we can all agree about the mental health crisis in front of us with our young people, our teens and young adults. I'm encouraged, grateful, and heartened by the effort that you all in our district to offer more resources to our students in this area, to offer things that really help, like access to more counseling. So let's not do things that will undo those efforts and that progress. Let's not, when we know our youth have unlimited access to find whatever they want on the internet, let's not have our trusted role models, our faculty and staff spoon-feed this kind of content to our children. Content that negatively affects mental health, content that negatively affects the development of healthy sexuality. If there are parents out there that feel like this is something they want their kids to see and have access to, that should be their choice, but not imposed on us by the schools. Thank you.
Um, here is an excerpt from the book Flamer. Quote, "We are each busting a load into this bottle. If you don't come, you have to drink it. Ha, ha, ha." End quote. This is a book that has been on display and is readily and easily available at Lake Middle School for our eleven-to-fourteen-year-old children. The foul and disgusting language throughout the book is completely inappropriate, and it ruins the message that should be taken away from it. A message of a boy who struggled and was teased due to his sexuality was gone as soon as mental images such as the example above are given. An excerpt from the book, All Boys Aren't Blue, that is promoted and available at the high school along with Flamer, is quote, "Nervous and drunk, I listened and got on my stomach. He got on top and slowly inserted himself into me. It was the worst pain I think I had ever felt in my life." He then added more lube and tried again. There are so many more inappropriate and pornographic descriptions in this book that is made available for our children and your students as young as fourteen years old. I understand and can acknowledge, not all parents agree with me, and have no problem allowing their kids to read this, but let's leave it up to the parents to decide. Our schools have no place to distribute these types of materials, and yet these books were proudly promoted and showcased by our high school librarian and K-12 library chair, who said, quote, "Two of the most banned books in America right now." I love them both so much, as she displayed them on her social media. I'm not trying to sound like the mayor of Belmont from the movie Footloose, but in my opinion, this is blatant distribution of pornography to minor children, your students, from one of your employees and educators. If one of my minor children went to a friend's house and one of their parents gave these books, books to them to read, I would be calling the police and most likely pressing charges. What actions will you take to remove these books from our school libraries, so our children are not exposed to this kind of bill? What type of disciplinary actions will you take against this employee exhibiting this behavior and distributing this inappropriate content? And what policies will you put in place to make sure this is not a reoccurring issue? And who's going to stand by to make sure those policies are being followed? If you haven't noticed, you continue to lose more students each year to schools outside of our district. Just in two of the local K-12 private schools, there are thirty Medfield students attending. It is time to start taking some accountability and focusing on what changes need to be made to make Medfield Public Schools appealing for all of us who moved here to send our children to. I would love to see concrete policies that allow for a safe, inviting, and inclusive learning environment for all students in regards to curriculum and inappropriate materials. Thank you. Passy 5 Delaware Road. I have one child in district and two half-district.
Hi, good evening. I'm Claudia Benson, 10 Woodford Road, here in Medfield, like most of you know who I am. I'm here today speaking as a lawyer, and I'm going to quote from the General Laws chapter seventy-two, section twenty-eight. It is unlawful to disseminate any matter which is obscene and is punishable by the crime of dissemination of materials to minors or in prison to the House of Corrections for up to five years, or to take prison for up to five years. So what I'm, what I want to, I don't actually want to be shown this, but I want to address with you guys here today is that these, this pornography that is in our schools and has been allowed to be there by our library, I don't know what else looks like the curriculum here, anywhere outside of education or outside of where we are right now, if I gave that material to a kid in my house, I would go to prison. I would be fine. This is a crime. We are not supposed to be providing our children with this type of obscenity, which is not good for them. Now, the legislature has to find harmful terms as follows. A matter is harmful to minors if it is obscene or if taken as a whole. It describes or represents nudity, sexual conduct, or sexual excitement, so as to appeal predominantly to the current interests of minors. Two, is patently contrary to the prevailing standards of adults in the county where the offense is committed as simple material for search minors. And three, lacks serious literary, literary artistic, political, or scientific value for minors. My question to you is, what literary or any type of educational value does this pornography have to be in the schools where our children are attending? It's absurd. You guys need to really take a good look at all of this stuff that is in the library that is pornographic material that's not appropriate. There's no placement from K-12. And really think about the fact that were it not for some exemptions where there is some type of artistic value, this is a crime. Please keep that in mind. Thank you.
I made fun of it up here. I was hanging out with my family, watching Naked and Afraid, and now I gotta come up and talk to you guys about porn. I have rich dank and I still live at Eight Donnelly Drive. Before I get into this, I just want to bring up two things. Jess Riley, last time I came up here and you weren't looking at anybody speak and you were just, you know, nose to your notes or whatever. You said, oh, these are just the public comments. I would argue this is just the most important part of your meeting. We're all taxpayers and parents, so.
I think that you've mischaracterized that, but what I do is that I just write all the comments so that I can hear them, understand them, and that is how I learn and how I absorb. So I'm sorry that you would like me to have eye contact. I'll go back and watch the.
I appreciate that.
The tape after this, so you feel like you have.
Also, Leo, I feel like you owe Ms. McQ here an apology. As a taxpayer and a parent, several months ago, I watched on the video you interject her while she was talking referring to what she was saying as arbitrary garbage. I don't think anything that anybody has to say here should be labeled as such, so, or, or I'll get, I'll, I'll, I'll give you the floor for my three minutes here and do that if you'd like. It's a good time to do that. Tech talk, Leo, are you gonna do it or are you gonna just have to stare down here?
You only have three minutes to let you down.
Yeah, we got like another two minutes and thirty seconds. We could just sit here and look at each other all night. You're a leader, Leo. Everyone take note of that. Leo Graham can't apologize to a taxpayer and a parent by calling their comments arbitrary garbage. Anyway, everyone here that I've heard, I disagree with everything you've said tonight. I'm, I'm actually disgusted by what I've heard, because I just don't know why we're afraid of the male orgasm. It happens, okay? Get over it. But the problem I have is that there's no parity. There's no equity, you know, because women have orgasms too, from what I've heard, and I mean... So let's close the gap. I was thinking maybe if you could get a prescription to the Penthouse Forum. Are you writing that, Jeff? Jeff, down, Jess?
No, I just wrote down free speech.
Okay, good. Penthouse Forum, I'm not even sure if it's still a thing, but, you know, we could buy some back issues on eBay. Be happy to offer that. Or maybe the music department should pass out the lyrics and we can teach the kids Cardi B's "Wack", that's "Wet Ass Pussy." I mean, it's just as graphic and gets the point across to all of our students. That sounds absurd to you, because it sounds absurd to me. I can't believe in eleven years I've lived here that I never come up to the school committee meeting and talk like this to a bunch of adults, but it's ridiculous. I'll give you another opportunity to speak, Leo, and the rest of you. I just want to get on the record, each school committee member's stance on these books available. Start with Ms. Kirby. Do you have anything to say?
First off, let's start right first off. My last name is Kirby.
Okay, don't forget the K. Kirby, go ahead.
Actually, the chair, hold on a second. Jeff? Yeah. The chair, sorry. Mr. Thing, we, this is not on the agenda. We are not allowed to deliberate. So if you'd like to reach out to us individually.
I just wanted to get on public record. You're hiding behind a policy that you created. You could just simply sidestep that. Just tell us what you think about the books. I paid twenty grand in taxes, forty grand for which go to you guys. I feel like I'd hate to be here at this podium. So how much time am I, how am I doing on time, Leo?
It's, it's over. I'm, I'm letting you finish.
Okay. All right, well, your silence is heard by the chair. Thank you very much, guys.
My name is Colleen Terry. I don't have anything on care. I'm a mother. I've got several kids in public schools. We've been really happy until we get to the middle school, and then we've gone private. And it's really disappointing. And for me, I'm here, I've never been to a school committee meeting, but to me, it's not just about this book. This is just such a concrete, it's so disgusting. It's another thirty standalone issues. I think this is like finally something that everyone will come together and push back. I pulled both my son and my daughter from the middle school. Tried it, tried it in sixth grade, tried to muscle through. I honestly, look, there's no exaggeration. I just feel like we pulled my daughter, she felt like she was being persecuted or hurt. And with all this talk of inclusiveness, and she felt very excluded. Lots of tears. We coach her to be able to get a countdown until she. So I just think that's really disappointing, and that's, so I just wanted to, yes, obviously I share and discuss these books, but it goes far beyond the books. I think this issue is just one more blatant overreach in agendas and completely inappropriate content that is not just there. It's not just that these books were kept on the shelf. We're going out of your way to recommend them. And I have plenty of other examples, so I just want to broaden them a little bit. I'm just a normal mom of all my daughters. I don't want to be here at the three-day school nights. It's the last thing I want to be doing, but it's important enough. And I just, we need, we need, we need change. I want my kids in schools. I don't want to be paying. How, I mean, we're penny-hitching everywhere we can, sending our kids to private school. We would cure it to be a closed source. So it's, you know, it's just, we need to, we need to make a change.
Thank you very much for your feedback, truly. We have been hearing from residents since the beginning of the week, and we are listening. And I'd like to take this moment to allow Dr. Marsden, actually, and the administration and the librarian have met this week, so I would like to.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. So just a couple of things. You know, first of all, from my perspective, I do not think that the middle school is an appropriate place for that, for Flamer. I just don't think it is. That's my personal opinion on that. I think high school is a very different story, and folks can have a conversation around that. What we've done is, as your policy says, put in place a procedure in district on how to look at reconsideration of books and literature. I think that's what, you know, we, we put together a process and, and looking at doing a committee to kind of look at this and have parents or staff members that have issues with it or anything go through this process. So, you know, maybe, Chrissy, maybe you could just quickly go over that, the process we've established, and it, it's not a situation where one person makes a decision, takes it off the shelf, and that's it. There has to be a process where we engage faculty members, administrators, students, those kinds of things. So I think that's what we tried to do, and maybe just go over it quickly.
Sure. I'm here with my assistant, Karen, the director of construction and innovation. We have a two-tiered process regarding any sort of reconsideration of instructional materials. But instructional materials, it's really broad. It needs both classroom materials and library materials. And it's a thoughtful and thorough process that will allow us to review different concerns. So the first step is the informal process, and that happens when a parent, guardian, community member, someone has a question or concern about a particular piece of material. And what they do is they first contact the direct, the person who has the most direct contact, the contact to the content. So usually that is a department chair, the CEO principle. And they, they really just discuss what the question is and what the concern is. Now, this comes through a number of times, and many times, it's actually, a concern is over a particular topic versus the instructional material itself, and that is rooted in our state frameworks as a public school that we follow. So we have that discussion. However, if beyond that, if there's still a concern or a question, there is a formal process, and this is our formal review process, in which a person would put forth a fill-up on that form, that all that form gets submitted, and a review to make sure it is something that, first of all, is not a topic or a, a something that lies in state frameworks, but rather specifically focuses on the instructional material itself. At that point, if it's warranted, it gets put forth, they commit, a committee is formed, and it's a wide variety of people made up of the administration, district administration, principals, teachers, as well as the department chair. In cases of K-12, middle school and high school, there would be a high school student as well representing it there. And at that point, the person put forth the concern as an opportunity to share their concerns, provide additional information and follow-up, and have a discussion on top of really sharing that, their concerns. At that point, the team deliberates, and deliberate considering a whole bunch of things, including the alignment to the frameworks and the curriculum, the context in which it's used, and, and of course, the submissions that are made by the people. And at that point, a recommendation is made, and a recommendation goes forward, and the recommendation not only is just a verbal recommendation, it's also a written report. And within the written report, it's thorough. It's, it's, the report is both majority and majority opinion, and the minority opinion. And it's, and the, the recommendation is really the majority, so it's not a single person. It is a group of people putting forward that recommendation, and that recommendation is submitted, it's a great type of review. At that point, that's the final decision that's made.
So the question, that's a reconsideration of the book that might be there. When a book is potentially crossing the line, how does it, what's the process whereby it's reviewed before it might get there in the first place?
Yeah, acquisition, yes. Of that, acquisitions happen a variety of different ways. We have formal press and textbook review committees for larger pieces of curriculum, also for specific, like a classroom text or quizzes, that is, that is done by the classroom teacher. So there is a variety of ways that the material gets into the classroom, and they, again, it depends on the scope of that. Right, currently, we're, we're piloting that curriculum. It is a very large scope. That would be a very formal process versus something that's smaller.
And I think we're currently reviewing the process in which library books are purchased, curated, and put out on the shelves. We're, we're looking at that right now to kind of that a bit, and see how that. Sorry.
That's the process now.
So the process is the librarian, the, the school-level librarian goes through the stacks in order of what he or she wants ordered, and that's all received by the content specialist, and then those get ordered. So we're, we're just taking a look at that.
So the same people who put this book on the shelf, and they reviewed whether the book is appropriate? Because that's where, we're concerned that that was. Who's holding them accountable?
Yeah, that's one person. So there's, keep in mind, that's a multiple different.
So, so who, like, who's the one person that approved it? Sorry, one moment. If, if you can just, one person at a time, and just, yes, public, just let us have a couple of questions to clarify. I think people are really fired up, and I can understand that. So we just need to.
Thank you.
I think our concern is that if it was just more than one person, how did multiple people miss this? And we, as human citizens, would probably not want those same people reviewing whether or not it's appropriate. Wouldn't it be the same people? If this is appropriate, we have a big problem. And how can we trust what the health teachers are thinking? What are the, what's going on in the classroom? What's going on? If this is okay, and if there's no action taken to remove this library?
See, I think the question is, was that process used for those books? No.
That's the reconsideration.
I think that's. That process was not used before.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry, but if that process was not used.
So one person just ordered them?
Correct.
Okay.
They go back and review the course, the object chairs, the, oh, chair, the library, the person that put them forward. So.
The KU-12 chair member, maybe.
It's the librarian.
It's the librarian. But I'm just, I'm usually in general. Yeah, let's talk about that, though. They have reasons that they put forward the book, and, and the, excuse me, in the spirit of their multiple perspectives, that would be one perspective of multiple around the table. I would also say that the person putting forward, and if there are multiple submissions, then there will be multiple voices. All of those voices will be represented either in person or with a written submission.
So the person who put the books up is also.
That is, that makes sense. I'm sorry, one last question. Thank you.
Is the book still out?
On the shelf.
Yes.
Okay, so if we're missing a step in the process, and there's this much concern, then start with our formal process.
Feedback, but I think what we have in our procedure right now is that the book stays there until the decision is made. I think that's true.
So keep exposing the kids, and then just keep allowing the kids to write it. And actually, parents and guardians also have a right not to have their child take out the book.
No, 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 no. No, I met with, I met with the librarian about graphic novels in May, and she said she will not, under any circumstances, limit access to any book in her library whatsoever. So that's what it says.
It is the case. It is the C D freedom at Dale Street was in the meeting with me, and that's why my kids are going to private schools, and I would like some tax money back for the K-12. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you very much. We're not going. So. Now, um, hold the minutes. The executive session, do we have a motion to approve and retain the executive session minutes from June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, to sixteen, June twenty-fourth, August second, and August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, please? So moved. So moved, Jess Riley, do we have a second? Second. Second, Michelle Kirby, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Yeah, all of them. All right, do we have a motion to approve August second and August twenty, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two minutes?
So move ten.
So ten, second.
Second.
Second, Leo, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Great, cute. And the workshop minutes on August eighteenth, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Jess, motion, do we have a second? Second, Michelle Kirby, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Great, thank you. All right, new business, summer projects.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Michael has a presentation that was in your materials that outlines all the summer projects that we did at our facilities. I'm gonna share that for this now. As I said in the materials, we got a lot accomplished this summer and really thankful to the community in the town for providing us with capital budgets to do all this. When you drove up tonight, you saw all those little huge boxes right up there. That's the roofing that finally came out. So we've been waiting since April, Michael, you posted that? April, we posted that and it just came in today. So they'll be working on the roof at Lake to hopefully prevent another leak like we had in springtime.
Time is not ideal that they're going to have a fourth on that roof.
Yeah, it's not great. But see if we get done. The last one, right?
So, uh, our silly department, I don't know, maybe, were very busy this summer. Many, many projects that took on and, uh, not all of them are complete, but they're almost complete by the rest of the roof. I just went out here at the high school. We continued with our lighting, lighting upgrades throughout the high school, including the gymnasium. So, so it's amazing how often I do those cages that used to be, uh, that used to, you know, protect my, there's no longer need for the cables. That's the type of lighting that we have. Next, the gymnasium, so. I'm David with, uh, so many, uh, like. We also at the high school replaced the carpet, the guy's office. So what's. And we've had some smaller projects that we possibly could have, such as maybe, uh, actually. We do have HBC that have the actual agency over there. My very happy replacement, uh, in the summer. There's two more units that are going to be replaced, but what all of it is on the spring. At the middle school, we replaced the boiler and the water in it. Uh, I think that last week, uh, it's, uh, heat pumps, uh, which is definitely going to install that ELO. Uh, stuff was installed at the middle school. So we should be seeing that it's there. Also, the middle school, um, it's a work, it's a great thing where we have replaced some ceiling tiles and some carpeting in the area. The main office in the library carpet was also replaced. And we also did a section or a maker space area, which was really good advice if you haven't seen it. Actually go in, okay.
Yeah, the tile and maker space area really makes a difference. You know, it's, I mean, that's an area that gets real messy and the kids are doing a lot of different projects in there. And to have tile instead of, instead of carpet there has been, been all.
At Dale Street, a lot of work that our college will prepare, not our full, uh, we get it wanted to, but we're, we're good at, uh, back those were painted, uh, the boss. Like the classroom seals, there was three classroom seals that we done and also light, uh, possible, also. Those were on, I believe, the second floor of the whole section. I forgot to put in the presentation, but we also changed all the classroom, uh, few months. So all of those had to, uh, read that.
So that was a safety issue that we had at Dale, right? We had door locks, some of them worked better than others and there wasn't one key for all that. So we had put that in our capital because we wanted to make sure that we could lock all the rooms for lockdown purposes, whatever, make sure that, uh, that was consistent. So a consistent key throughout and new locks.
We also did some of the basement and, uh, at the old section of Dale Street. And we did new flooring, we installed the flooring, uh, with, with that, uh, it's a lot deeper, special. But it looks brighter now. Uh, we repaired the back room, which is the anchor music room. Carpet walls, the ceiling tiles, that was all replaced and recharged. That's where we had the, uh, we, so we had replaced the, uh, the roof.
And that was all insurance and that was the reason why we had the modular up there that entire time. So once that was completed, the insurance company finally took that lovely modular out there. We got the parking spaces back, we'll look at that, um, container, anyone?
And then at the ELO school, again, we took the front hallway by cafeteria. That's a new, uh, we created that for it and replaced those tires. Go with especially to give it the opposite hallway, uh, that we bought. We also, uh, uh, we back the project for the, uh, water tank, or the rest of our water tank at ELO. That was delayed due to materials, but that, um, the lead was going to be small. And everything, uh, that's a smaller part. That's also one of the factors that hasn't been completed. We're also proud that we put in, uh, these stations at the, uh, ELO and at Prince School. Infrastructure is there, the actual stations are not quite in, uh, we'll wait for stations to come in. Canada, so, um, yeah, oh, we will have two stations at ELO. We have two stations also at Lake, um, we are working with our consultant on, on that. There's other projects that we're not going to bring it up. That's what we want to put, so, you know, there's going to be some charities that we're looking at. One place to do this for my school possibly, uh, over the parking lot. Those are all projects that we want to, you know, for next year. So we move forward with, uh, spring, summer. Projects that, again.
So we did get some calls that people thought we're putting up a cell tower at Lake while that construction was going on. So we just had to clarify that, but, but a couple of calls on that. I know that they're, they actually have been working at the one they're doing behind Town Hall, um, all of this week. It looks like they put the whole up and they're almost complete with the one at Town Hall. So that was part of the work that Michael had done and worked collaboratively with the town to get the charging stations on, on Town Hall property.
At Memorial, uh, we moved BCT for it on the Adams Street way. We buy a lot of, also, we placed a memorial. And then we did a couple of AC units, uh, just put units, uh, for, uh, to knowledge. And, uh, the light, uh, replacement, in fact, uh, last spring, uh, when the bus was ready to, oh, that was actually replaced this week. And like I said, it'll be, you still have some smaller projects that won't work. The major project, most of the major projects, we said nine, seven, projects for that in summer.
Thank you, so much work done.
Yeah, thank you, Michael.
It's really, it's nice to see.
All righty, summer projects, agreement for allocation of annual costs.
So the auditors in town, uh, when they were doing the end of the year project audit, recommended that the school committee look at this and, and re-vote it. It hasn't been re-voted in a long time. So Michael, kind of tell you what this is and what the impact is.
So there is an agreement between the select board and the school committee that was, uh, 2025, isn't it? It's a quiring between the government and the secondary education and the U. Where the funding, there's certain funding sources that are on the town side that have to be allocated back to the school side, such as financing guys or a resource officer. Those are expenses that are on the town side that when we do the end of year report, which we're working on currently, we have to allocate those funds from town into the school side. That agreement has to be between the select board and the school. We are not suggesting any changes in the way we allocate the funds, which is asking that the school committee, uh, select board, I'd be saying, uh, simply that months ago, um, that the school committee look at it and, um, sign it, agree with it, uh, current, that we now file. And then I will submit this back to the department of education and submit it to our auditors. So we pull it out, forward with our end of year report.
Michael, um, you submitted to the board, the, what?
What is like we are inside it?
Yeah.
So.
No, I mean, the board of education, just because they're at once, it's both same.
No, once it's both sides, we send it to the department of education. So when they review our end of year report, it will be our location and how, what they're bringing it.
Michael, there's nothing changed in here as it's the same as it has been for the last twenty years.
So the auditors did review it, they didn't make any changes to what, uh, current.
I'm comfortable making the motion. So we have a motion.
Jess Riley, yes.
Jess Riley, do we have a second? Second, second, Michelle Kirby, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the agreement for allocation. Thank you, thank you, Michael.
Thanks.
Oh, yes. So the disposal of outdated curriculum materials.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in your materials, you had a memo that was written by Dr. Power to be, um, she went through a lot of curriculum materials in the, in the past few months. And there are some outdated materials that either we're not using or, um, they were published before our standards have been updated statewide. So we're asking for your approval to dispose of those.
Okay, that's a clear question. When we say dispose, where does the book or material go? Recycling it, does it get donated, like, where's it go?
Well, we try to recycle first and if we can't recycle them, typically. Or like trash.
But it's not like being passed on to another school district, like outdated things we're not passing on to other places.
No, I think if it were, if we had materials like whole class sets of things, then we would look to do that with some of the materials. But because there's, is one of, one of each or three or, or two, it's just not, you know, people don't want just one copy of something.
And also just, we wouldn't want to disseminate something so outdated to, to another place, right?
You'd be surprised. Coming back around some of these things. Lucy Cockens, I see the 1986 version of Lucy Cockens in here for ready. But it's, it's updated conditions that we already have. Yeah, yeah, same with the funds, but now we have updated.
So. Okay, um, do we have a motion to approve the disposable, disposal of updated curriculum materials?
So move Tim.
So we can second?
Second.
Second, Leo, all in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. The high school model UN club, annual conference, triple approval.
Yes, with your materials, you have the letter for Rachel Buckingham, who is the advisor of Model UN. We've had really good feedback from this program. Kids have done a great job with it. It's over, it's at Brown University this year, Providence, and it's a couple of overnight. So typically anytime there's any out of state or overnight trip, we ask for your blessing on that. So I would ask that you approve as presented by Rachel.
We have a motion to approve the Model UN trip to Brown.
So moved.
So move Leo, second, second, Michelle Kirby, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm so excited for these kids to be doing these things, so.
Thank you.
Any other items to speak to?
Other than the fact that I just, if I could just address maybe the letter that I sent over.
Yes, please.
So I said, as you know, I said, parents, the, the update for the rankings, uh, some of the information that we found out. Initially, we had thought that it was 11 students and we had miscoded when we looked at the first batch data, which we ended up miscoding, but that had nothing to do with, um, the college attendance that Jesse had put together. So those 11 students were either gap year, military or employed. And we had coded them as unknown. So they had no impact on students that were in school. But as we looked at it a little closer and I talked with folks at Desi, either whether it was, uh, folks that were in the data piece or the commissioner, it was very clear that there were some of our students that were not counted in attending college. And how it works is really interesting. I didn't know how it works and no one else seemed to know how it worked. So like, got the information from that, but meeting outside of Desi. So what tends to happen is we send all of our data of graduates to Desi. They sit on that for 10 months. So in the March of their second semester at college, they run an analysis, they send all the data to a third party, National Student Clarion House. They run an analysis of our graduates against the college information that they have. So in this case, uh, as they told me, they have 99.3% of the colleges represented that participated in this, student clearinghouse. When they ran that data on that particular day in March, whenever that was, 23 of our kids were left out. So we look at that data point and look at it over 10 years, we're typically between 90, 91, 92, it averaged over 90 over 10 years. It came down to 78.5. So that was really the red flag for us that something's going on with that. It didn't make much sense to us. So we went through that and spoke to Desi, they were very helpful. I had two meetings with Boston Magazine, the research editor twice. They were, you know, they were good. They wouldn't let us know what their algorithm was and what they waited, um, what items and what data points they waited. However, they said to us, you can assume that based on that data mistake, that it did impact negatively your ranking. They also said that they would actually redo our ranking if Desi would really change the data. So that was our meeting with Desi after that. So long story short, Desi would not agree to that and, and their logic is, I understand their logic, you know, their logic is that we had a data, uh, we took all the data on that certain period, whether it was three or four days in March, and that's what we use for our comparison. Now, in our case, the data was good, it was incorrect, it was 23 kids. We confirm with those 23 families that their child was actually in school during that time. So we did that extra step to make sure that we, you know, they were confirmed, they were there. And if they were to run it again now, you know, they would say it would be, uh, not consistent data across the state. So if you ran Metfield in September of 2022, you read, anyone else, everyone else is in March of 22, that, that's not a consistent, like, data source.
And so they can't backdate it.
So now they can't back.
So Jeff, so the question I, I have is, how did the 23 get left out at this, if we reported them?
We reported it and that was confirmed.
How did the, how did the Desi miss it?
Desi didn't miss it. Third party, Desi sent all of our data that was confirmed correct.
Okay, so they're talking about, so they're leveraging this third party.
They have a contract with them to do this.
So they can use the data.
Right.
Just trying to see who's paying who here in this scenario.
So Desi has a contract with the National Student Clarion.
Right.
Yeah.
And then they publish this data on the website.
Desi does.
Yeah.
So Boston Magazine said, we don't do anything but go to the Desi website, just take it right off. That's all we did. We don't have anything scientific about it. We take all the information, we literally send it to a guy at Babson College who has his own algorithm. He runs it through and spits everything out. That's all. So they wouldn't let us in on the waiting because I had a concern with a couple of their data points that don't seem like they make much sense to be ranking schools with. But, you know, they, they said it's only one person and that's kind of how they do it. I mean, I think you look at.
Magazines, doesn't it?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, you look at, to me, if you, if you want to do a comparison, you want to look at an apples to apples comparison of an assessment that everyone has to take, same timeframe, same standard, same everything, right? Which would be MCAS in my mind. Yeah, so you look at that MCAS and, and then you look midfield, high. Which would be MCAS in my mind. Yeah. So you look at that MCAS and, and then you look at Medfield High School MCAS. And how we did compared to the top fifty. Okay. So our, our language arts MCAS was higher than number one Weston. It was higher than number four Manchester Essex. It was higher than Lincoln, separate number eight, higher than Littleton number ten, and higher than Andover, twelve. It was tied with Winchester number two, Whalen number five, uh, Acton Boxboro six, and Hamilton one eleven. So we're looking at an actual data point that is consistent because AP is not consistent across the state. Everyone does it differently. Everyone's different. Every town has different rules. But the consistent, you know, uh, assessment that goes across. That's how we fare, right? And then you look at, at Bath, we were higher than number four, Manchester Essex, higher than Whalen, higher than Acton Boxboro, higher than. Higher than Andover. So, you know, academically, if we're going to look at it that way, which is our business, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Another stuff I forget too, the MCAS is the snapshot of a kid in one day.
Correct, but it's a consistent, so there's two.
But it is consistent.
There's two, there's two apples to apples you can do on a Desi's data. One is per pupil expenditure and MCAS. All right, those are ones that you, you can probably lump in graduation, you know, which we were, you know, ninety percent or whatever.
Right, yeah.
Um, you could probably do that too, but there are some that, uh, I'm not sure teacher evaluation is the best one to use when you're ranking.
I'm also a little bit curious about the, I didn't realize about the National Clearing, Student Clearinghouse.
No one did, Leo.
Colleges are clearly selling that with that data. There's the kid, the student data. And so I'm curious as to what that gets used for. I mean, it's obviously not for us, but definitely, you know, as a data privacy point. At the same time, I've always, when I've looked at that number and we knew it was part of rankings, right? We knew that the, uh, pieces, but. How often do they follow up on that following year? Right? Do they make it to sophomore year, right? So do they make it to junior year? Uh, or they move colleges and they lose track, right? As much colleges.
They claim that even if they move colleges, that ninety-nine point three percent of colleges participate with them. And they'll be able to catch a student that goes somewhere for their sophomore year or the junior year, or takes a gap year and starts.
Maybe by name, right? But there's no, there's no common identifier. You know, they would have to use multiple fields to identify that students. Cause it's not like the, you know, like we have a state ID here, you know, that every student, uh, doesn't exist from college to college. So, uh, so I don't know how that, I'm curious as how they're doing. I think I've, I've seen a lot of holes in the processes in terms of data personnel.
Yeah.
I could defer to the domo gentleman.
But it's also, it's also data that we, we submit correctly. And then.
Yeah.
It's analyzed ten months after they graduate our schools and then we're based on bad data set, right?
Right.
So it's. It was what I wanted to do. You submit it to Desi. Desi submits third party, third party, submits it to, in this case, Boston.
Back to this. Desi publishes it on the website.
And then Boston.
So we, we would like to be very honest when they publish. That's hard. You saying Desi publishes it. Desi then puts it on their website.
Yeah.
So there's a zillion data points that we sent to Desi.
I think the commissioner needs to make a point. I think the commissioner owes it to you as superintendents, all of you. To be aware when that publishing happens, right? When those things are updated. Exactly. And now you don't know what to.
And the commissioner was, was great. I mean, he, um, we did a couple of phone calls. And he had his, his associate commissioners, you know, talk to us over the phone and kind of go over the process and how that all works. Uh, they were very, very helpful, but, um, I understand why they can't do it for Medfield because that might be twenty-seven other districts that want the same kind of. Second look.
Well, that means twenty-seven other districts that have.
But, yeah, you know, I just think that. I think it's too, the data is too important not to have it locked solid, you know, and not to have it double, triple check before it gets back published. And we don't have that opportunity.
Well, and also it's an external, uh, it's an external pressure on our kids, on our parents, on everyone. You know, Boston Magazine is not an educational authority on anything from that front of data, right? They're selling magazines, US News, yes. US News and World Report is front and data. They come up with, you know, better numbers, but really they're just as meaningless and they're selling magazines. And I, I, I really think that there's a larger philosophical conversation here about how intensely. Um, people feel about these external rates, these rates that are these kind of rankings that, that. Don't really particularly have a whole lot of bedding, you know, like there's no apples to apples across the board of any of these. And then you get one post and it's like, oh my God, we're fifty-two. And yeah, I'm, I'm. It is unfortunate that you have had to spend quite so much time trying to straighten out Boston Magazine and try to. Clearly has been educational and eye-opening, but that is time that, you know, people get so angry about it. Social media and at the same time. You know, we worry so much about the pressure on our kids. We spend so much time talking about their mental health and. And yet there are these external pressures that we put on them to essentially represent our town. And you think like, well, okay, institutionally, how. How, how do? Just as a culture, I think even in town, how do we rectify that? How do we say we want to support our kids as much as possible? And we're going to place our kind of sense of value on rankings that we can not necessarily have any kind of. Impact on really, really except doing the best that we can do at all times.
But I think it's, you just have to be careful, I think, because, you know, we can't, we can't want a parade where we get a really nice one that. We can't prove it when it comes out this way. My first summer here.
Here, we didn't, we didn't throw a parade on the US News and.
No, I know that. About that, you know, I mean, I think we just got to be careful with that. My first summer here, um, I remember meeting with, uh, Mike Sullivan. And the rankings came out when I was here and it was thirty-seven. And I remember saying, and I'm talking to Mike about it, like, ah, you know, we never do well on, on Boston Magazine. And then I remember talking to leadership and I said, oh, we never do well in Boston, Mike. And it was just, it's kind of like default. You know, we never do, and I said, well, why? You know, just kind of, so I think, I mean, I don't think they're great. I'll give you the end all be all, but. People pay attention to it.
Well, yeah, because it's numbers.
Yeah.
Right? It feels good to, to pay attention to numbers, but I think.
Number sales got it.
So we, we focus so much on numbers that I think we need to focus on kids.
Yeah.
And our kids do so well. I'm so proud of them. I know, you know, two of my kids have graduated from the school. I know countless kids, I'll never forget, just a couple of weeks ago, I saw a group of boys who maybe graduated. Two years ahead of my oldest son, you know, twenty seventeen or something. They all came together. And I think I spoke at their graduation, but they were so polite. They were telling us, you know, I was sitting with a group of moms. What they were doing, the jobs they had. These are, our kids are high functioning, great kids who do well. This mother just the other day.
But there are some other kids who just get in the door and that is the best thing that they have been able to do. And that is the greatest achievement.
For sure.
That day for them. And I think that we need to appreciate all of that.
Focus so much on the social and emotional, because I think there were higher stakes before and it just, it was crashing for some. So I think I would like to believe that we're finding more of a balance. Our kids, you know, are doing well. And we're trying to support them, you know, um, social, uh, socially, emotionally, so.
I think, I mean, I've just seen it over the last, I mean, even on the time that I've been on committee. How far we have come and how much effort we have made and tried to be so creative and keep on pushing around how we support our kids. But I just, again, I think it is worth saying to the community, let's, let's think about how intent we are. On how we do, how it's kind of random. Families. Say it, you know, maybe not popular, but I think it's important that we talk about how it also affects our kids. It doesn't just affect. Us.
And, and, and the teachers, you know, they're, they're doing, they're doing a great job. And, um, so I don't know, it's about people to me, but I understand that it's easy to look at numbers. You know, it's like looking at.
It's reassuring. I mean, I understand it. During the time that you're so anxious all the time.
Just look at the rank number and then you look at the devil details, which like I just described where we're doing better academically on that exam. Than other districts that were in the top fifteen consistently, you know, and I think, I mean, nine out of the, nine out of the top fifteen, we're either tied or better than. Or language arts and that's, again. Across the board, that's, that's an important assessment. And it's, and for tenth graders, that decides who they graduated on. So it's a important assessment.
Yeah.
You know, when it comes to these rankings and, you know, there's even a national rankings as well now, right? And I've had the, I've had the opportunity to step into many of these school districts across the country. And, you know, the, there is, there is no, I, I can't imagine that there's any one, you know, scenario where. The attributes of any of these schools makes one any better than another, you know, particularly here in Massachusetts. You know, when you look at the, the quality of, uh, the opportunity of education here in Massachusetts across the board in many of our communities. Because.
But not all. I, I want all this.
Fair enough.
There are a lot of places.
A lot of challenges.
Don't have.
That's right. Um, exactly. And, and I think that we use, you know, we use our advantage for the best for our children, right? I think that's the point. And that's why, you know, we had a room full of people here tonight because they're invested in their children and they care about the education of their children. Right? And, and so on. So there are places, you know, that, that wouldn't happen, right? So, uh, those are the main differentiating factors in the success of our students, right? People's parents are involved in their education, like a part of that process. That's a, I would leave it at that. It's just rankings of the numbers. They fluctuate all the time. Like walking down.
We recommend the Wellton Blood Will's podcast on how the quality rankings started.
If you actually listen to that, it is the most amazing.
It really is.
Eye opening. And that's where I, I just, so much of it is about networking, who you know, who knows whom. And, you know, it, it's just, it's a problem. It actually, it really is. But in any case, I, I feel like I just needed to say, Mike, we stopped that a little bit, but we can move on.
All right. Old business. New elementary school project. Well, the application was accepted by the Board of Selectmen.
And I cannot wait until we can form an SBC.
Yes. So we are due to have. Um, we have to, I reached out to the Long Meadow folks about how their products. I was doing a search and I liked how they did their process, so. I have been in communication in the past with Gus and Scott, and I just want to. See if we can align a little bit with that process. Um, how Long Meadow did it, they had one Google form. Click, you know, uh, are you applying for Board of Selectmen or are you applying for a school committee position? Um, they had a beautiful process and, uh, I was hoping that at our next workshop, we could spend some time on the process. And then get going along with the other topic at the, at the workshop that we're stuck in a second.
Um, one thing, thank you for all the work going out to the, you know, for select the mates. I know either two of you were there.
Yes, yes, we were, but I may not go back.
And thank you to the Board of Selectmen of the town for accepting it, like I was saying out there. Relative to, you're talking about our process for four, and then there's a broader process for twelve.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think, um, we do, is anybody coordinating? What is that? How does it, how do we get to the twelve?
I think that's kind of what.
Workshop though.
Oh, I'm talking about for us.
For us amongst our four.
Us amongst our four.
Okay.
We're not in charge of the total.
So there's work stream A, which is.
Working together. Yes.
Work stream B, which is how to, or is anybody thinking about, hey, how do we get to the twelve?
I think we need to focus on our lane, but big picture, I think, like to, you know, work together as well. Does that make sense?
Correct. Yeah, I absolutely agree. So then the trigger to make that happen might be.
The AG has to send back the legislation after they muted, so that.
Yes, but we can still move forward.
We can move forward, but if there's.
Start a committee and.
Well, can we actually?
No, not start a committee. Choose our people.
Right.
To serve.
So we, we can kind of choose, but you know, I, I know that there is a lot of feedback about why haven't you done this yet? Why haven't you done? And that, you know, because there is a bylaw that we needed to pass at town meeting. That has not yet been approved by the legislature and, or by the AG. And when that happens, assuming that it comes back without. Without modification or, you know, that, that that's when you can actually get the SBC in place. Um, and so I think it's important to be able to pull the trigger, but I do think that the public needs to know that it's not like we're just dawdling.
Right.
It's that there are a lot of things the SBC needs to do.
Yeah, the gates are open and now we have to, yeah, choose our path.
Yeah.
So, so then by law it gets approved. And then, you know, I just wondering like if you talk about a workshop, maybe it's a workshop with the. The warrant committee. Or it's like a school committee says, hey, let's talk about how do we.
I think we want to do our workshop.
Yes.
First, to be able to establish our process, to choose our four.
Sure, sure. So that, all that's okay. If the bylaw is approved by the AG. Next week. I would just like to be, I would like to think that we're not going to be like a three month process.
No.
I would just like.
Sorry.
What was the October second date? Was it by October second or we're going to get notified on October second?
Oh, for the. By, by, okay.
So if we're, we're saying, hey, we can have a workshop on the twenty.
Yeah.
Okay, so we would do that. And maybe it is. We're more appropriate, I guess, to use chair with the, as for the warrant committee.
Yes, I will.
We should have a.
Yes.
Tribunal.
It's a $50 tribunal.
Yeah, you were, you were, there was some concern earlier. Uh, I thought someone had mentioned what happens if someone applies to each group or something. Right, well, so something.
I, I, I think it's all going to work out. It's going to work out. Yeah.
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 I think if we're gonna have a workshop, let's have a dual workshop on that, talk about space needs, uh, because since they are on the same.
Yes. So I think that needs to be its own.
When I say space needs, I'm not talking about. There's a fees, almost feasibility study.
Yeah. But we.
I'm not going to comment too much about the meeting that I saw the other, not too much, but, but the one of the things that was clearly, you know, escaping. Mr. Murphy was the, uh, the fact that the feasible, which he's fully aware of the process. I felt he was being unfair to you both in the meeting, asking the questions he was asking you. Particularly because he just got through the product or was aware of the process that we had just gone through. So, uh, and that is the feasibility study, you know, whatever that is, you know, when we. It's, there's, there's guidelines around schools that we can go through and deciding on the number of students is still equal, just like Dr. Mark, Dr. Martin said. The, you know, the size of the classroom, the class sizes we're going to support, you know, and, uh, and the spaces we need. For special education and so on. So, um, I think that, uh, all that will be flushed out of that, having that conversation. I just think also that we should prepare to have alternative space needs that we need to address now, because we have a space problem. At Dale today. Yeah, there are a lot of kids in my daughter's classroom, you know, uh, in a very small classroom. Designed in a time where we had small class sizes here because it was a small town, right? So.
And learning was different because we all sat rows straight ahead and did, wrote memorization to be able to kind of. Perform the work that was available at that time. We were training.
Training to be.
Yes. So essentially, the application has been approved. Thank you, Board of Selectmen. And, uh, I thought, you know, it was a fruitful discussion. And I think we're going to have many workshops, but I think this first step would be to establish our process to select our four.
Yes.
Yes. That we have a lot more work to be done, for sure. At least we can now, again, and I could put about this. Um, any other comments about the? I don't have like a comment coming, but I don't know if anybody got the home talk weekly today, but Richard Disorder did like. A thing on Memorial and like kind of a.
a thing on Memorial and like kind of the history of it. And the thing that struck me, I brought it actually, but I'm not. But, um, he goes the history of Memorial, but like it very, it's very cyclical in regards to like us having these giant enrollment challenges, us having facilities issues, us having enrollment challenges, us having facility issues. And I just, I just thought it was very well timed on how it came out, because I feel like one of the things I think I'd like us to be able to look at from like a town standpoint is, is that the cycle we want to continue when we're looking at what we want to be doing with then whatever the new space is, or do we want to be in a place to try to finally maybe break the cycle a little bit and do something that can last the town for maybe more like fifty years or something like that? I'm a little worried right now. As we look at some of these pieces that will just be putting like a Band-Aid solution on or kind of kicking the can down the road for the next generation to deal with it. And I just hope that we can find a place where we can kind of really take that holistic big picture, look at everything and figure out what we want, not we like us, like we as a town, what do we want our legacy to be? What do we want to leave? What do we want to make better? Because I feel like we have an opportunity to do that here, taking the failed vote and turning, you know, taking lemons and turning it into lemonade, right? Like what can we do here to like make things better?
It is a Band-Aid.
If anybody like just grab your hometown, because I know sometimes it ends up in recycling, but like right inside the second page and I just, I don't know, like, it was very, I was like, oh, that's, oh, wait, but that was nineteen fifty and we're in twenty twenty and this sounds very familiar. So.
And it always goes up to, you know, like, it's referred to as value engineering, right? We'll start with, everyone was in with that attention, right? Just like we did when we were going to look at the three grade tool, right? We had all the best intentions to build that fifty year school, because that's exactly how the conversation goes with the NSBA and said, you're building a school that's going to be there for fifty years. You shouldn't have to tack on extra stuff.
Right.
We need it to be efficient and build the last solid that fifty years. That's what we want to, that's what they were going to put money behind. But what, you know, what ends up happening is, is, you know, we were fearful in the pandemics, we trimmed it back a grade, you know, to bring the cost down, because we didn't weren't sure what was happening as a result of the pandemic. And and then we were, you know, and then we were still, you know, messing around with that. The price came down, the price came down. And unfortunately, what happens is then you start cutting things and you start cutting into that fifty years too. And Memorial's, that I hear, we just replaced the flooring at Memorial, you know, that, that building that was only renovated twenty years ago. So and it's at capacity. So at the time, it wasn't thought of, or I'm sure the proposal came through and then, you know, we'll cut the taxpayers' report at the time. And I don't remember what that, you know, project probably cost. I'm sure I'm responsible for this, that is that number, maybe.
Oh, it took two votes. They're very much on the same boat.
Yeah, but just, I mean, I know, like, I recognize that that's how it happens. And if that's the cycle that we want to continue, like, and that's what the people want, that's fine. I just hope we're able to take that look and maybe try to, try to be a little bit more forward thinking, because we, I feel like a lot of the town has become invested in this process, right? Like, I think a lot of people really do care. And like, I guess, I ask them what they want their legacy to be. And if their legacy is twenty years is good for us and someone else can figure out twenty years, then that's what we'll figure out. But if people want to make a more lasting impact on the future of the town, I think that's something we should be willing to have as well.
I think it's an excellent thing for the communication, perhaps. That's part of, you know, that, that process engaging the town. Like, like it's going to be. Perhaps this may sound crazy, but perhaps all the taxpayers' names go on the building somewhere. You know, something like that, you know?
All right, we're jumping ahead. But thank you. All right. Communication and community updates. Sorry. Any other comments on school building?
Step forward.
Yes.
So, yeah, relative to community, it's an ongoing conversation we've been having. But high level, it's, you know, trying to to ensure that the school committee, I wrote down a couple of words during the meeting, but it's more integrated and accessible within the community. There's lots of ways we can do it, I'm sure. We've all come up with, since I've been on school. But one of the themes that I've been thinking about is leveraging processes and systems that we have in place with possible, right? It's logical. A couple that I've talked with Jeff, you know, maybe we could have a conversation as well, our site council and PTO, it's low hanging fruit where we can do better. And site council, you know, wouldn't it be great if when we have like the principals here, they tell, talk about the opening. Members from the site council or at least one joins them and they can kind of share a little bit of, so it might take a little while, it may take one or two years before we get it. But hey, these are some of the themes or key ideas we're thinking about going into the year. And then it's typical, we have the principles towards the end of the year. And we can, not as some, you know, kind of informal, hey, these were the priorities, these are the things we talked about, this is what's important. It may or may not be all that much time then, but I think it's, it's a bit more of a force function that drives more integration. If I was on the state council, I would want to say, hey, what if you do, there is at least some expectations, you know, keeps us a little more attentive. So that was, that was one idea that I think we talked about. I think Jeff, you, you said principals like the idea.
They did.
So like, you know, and I think that's, it's right in place.
So we're meeting principals in here at the, well, elementary first, so I have a reference I can.
Yeah, no, I think it's great. I've heard different, I've talked to a bunch of folks who've served, you know, over the last few years, I've heard different reviews of what they're doing. So that, that's one. Another one, Anna May and I were kind of brainstorming a little, and I think some of this existed back in the day, so to speak, was with your PTOs. Sometimes we've done office hours, things like that. We may do it again. We kind of say, hey, come to here, come to us. And we need to do a better job going out to them. Where, you know, a lot of times locally at schools is where a lot of the action is, we all know is happening. So I was thinking about it, there's five of us, five PTOs, and it'd be great if each one of us chose a PTO and we're a little more coordinated with that PTO. You know, allows them to have their meetings as they always do, but we can come in maybe once in a while and say, hey, what are the priorities, what are the themes? It's one of those ones.
That's something we were doing pre- pandemic too, and I think the last couple of years, we've just been running so hard, it's been almost impossible to kind of do it, but if we want to go back, but.
But way back when, it was a bit more formalized in terms of like the CSA. I was the CSA rep to the school committee. I would sit there, there was a reporter there, you know, and then I would report back in the CSA meeting. And I think it's great that Tim really wants to initiate, like building more bridges within the community. And we have to go out there as well.
Yeah. So and I've at least talked to some of the couple of PTOs, some of the leaders, that, you know, what do they think? And they love the idea, right? And now, again, some of it happens anyways. I'll go to a PTO meeting here or there.
Yeah.
Or a site council meeting, give them a heads up, just to be like, so to speak. But it's getting a little more like integrated in there and see what, see where it goes. So those are two that I consider low hanging fruit. I think that concept we can continue to apply it. CPAC, maybe somebody's more integrated there would make sense. So I think we wanted to keep that on the agenda as part of our workshop for other ideas that are similar and maybe we can see if, you know, I'd love to keep that on that, you know, that seems like a logical one.
So you're thinking that one for each PTO, then one for CPAC, that's the one.
Yeah, I think. So so I think the site council and the PTO is like, that system's in place. It's very easy. There are definitely other CPACs there as well.
Yeah.
Then you start, you can start moving, this can continue to evolve to a whole bunch of other areas that I think.
Then end up making a whole lot of effort for that school for the members as well. I mean, I think we need to kind of look at our workflows as well. How do we make that happen in a way?
In the workshop.
Yeah.
Is we'll discuss this a little bit more, because you're right, we used to do this, we had a schedule of all the PTOs and we'd see, all right, who's free to.
Who can go, who can go, yeah. And or who can do office hours, or who could do this, or and it became kind of really.
So I think we can kind of get into the weeds of how this looks like and what we're capable of doing in the workshop. But I do think this is, this is a great step forward again to build more bridges.
You know, we hope that each school keeps the calendar, right? You know, with the site council stuff, you know, and I know it's, we could try to go through. And I'll try to do that, but maybe if we get added, just as an invite, so just awareness levels, sometimes they, you know, the way work schedules work these days, where people work, all myself included. There are times I'll have chunk of time, I think they usually happen on the mornings, right? I would have that. Yeah. So I would like to, you know, I'm okay with that's kind of maybe each owning one, like I like to live into like on that, but at the same time, you know, I'd want to be advised. Like I mentioned, I made a point that's going to make a, be a part of, you know, more of a CPAC this year. But also I'm very interested that the middle school, it's way up the middle school too. So after my first pin night last night, so. Yeah. So that's what I think. There's, like, I call it lower hanging fruit. There is definitely, we always need to do more.
I'm afraid Mr. Pink will say that you think that everybody is a group. Low hanging, and I don't want to go there.
So I'm going to, I just think there's some that seem pretty easy to start to take on. There are others where we are going to say, hey, wait, we do this, what about this and that? And it can get very easily, we can find ourselves in where we're not doing any of it.
Yeah.
And we're not, or we're not, you know, we're, we're doing some, but I thought of the site council was an easy, you know, relatively easy one. PTO, I think some of it's already happening. That's, we should talk about that a little more. It's definitely an ongoing conversation. There's a lot more there.
Yes, definitely.
And Jeff, I'm not quite sure, you know, nowadays, when they, how they bring in the CPAC members, or not, sorry, the new, like, say, council members. I think it would be something that they, you know, it'd be good for them to hear that, they, you know, there's, there's a little. Again, the PTOs, they're glad to share like presidents, so we can have somebody reach out. You know, we don't have to meet to do that, that can always happen. Try to make it simple, you know, like we are, you just, like I hadn't thought of that. Hey, if you're dealing with, like, yeah.
Well, then. You can do a PTO of a building that you're not in, and you have the perspective of where your own kid is.
Right.
And there might be some.
Yes, but let's talk about that in the workshop.
Exactly. And then we're shopping, I probably won't be.
That's why I've been being aware of all of it. I mean, I, I can go to many stuff, you know, if I see it right on there, I think I'll just, I think I might get time, I'm looking about, go to it. So I think it's more just awareness.
Super. Thanks, Tim. Great. And donations.
Thank you, Matt. If you asked that you approve the following donation, twenty five dollars from Nancy Featherment to the high school gift account. This donation was made in honor of MHS teacher John Coco Jr., who passed away in spring.
Do you have a motion to approve that donation? Jess?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Second, Michelle, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much. Any other thoughts, any comments to see? Lily?
Lily, welcome.
How's it going, beginning of senior year?
It's good, busy.
Updates, vibe, feeling?
Good. I mean, I know on the student council, then we're just getting ready for the pep rally, because it's earlier this year.
When is it?
October seventh.
Oh, really, really?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's because we wanted outside again, and it has to be more.
Yes, it has to be.
It was pretty chilly last year, wasn't it? Great idea, tough execution.
Well, we're very grateful you're here with us. Thank you. Any comments?
I'll, yeah, I suppose I attended my first pin night. I know I've said it a couple of times, but I was very impressed with the staff on the sixth grade. And it was a well-oiled machines. I got to see, you know, Mr. Vaughn, should have tier two, which is, I guess, part of the.
It is. It's part of the mythology.
Yeah. So, but, you know, very relevant information. So I was, the school culture, you know, was engaged there. And of course, he's had a long time to work with, you know, as a, as a team. So they just seem very into it. So. And shout out to Mr. Mallard, who had the, out of all the teachers, he's the one that had an icebreaker for us. So first thing we did is gave us an assignment.
That's real. Anyone else? I all, I want to mention that I'm very grateful that the school, our schools now have a partnership with McLean. And I think that is very positive partnership that I'm grateful for. I just want to announce Medfield Coalition for Suicide Prevention. We're having it's like fourth or fifth yoga on the turf on Sunday at twelve thirty. And if you folks have noticed the purple lights in town, that is for suicide awareness, which is the month of September.
When I saw this, I would say the culture fest. Some emails.
Through Bell Porch.
Yeah.
Maybe just together as a partner.
Yeah. Our eyes and use open, there is, we have to make people aware.
Super. So I believe our workshop, I'll firm that up with the dates, but it's planned for the twenty third, ten thirty. And, um, and then the meeting after that is October thirteenth. So do we have a motion to adjourn? Sorry, did you have any? Sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm facing this way, sorry.
That's all right. I just wanted to say we've had a great start to the school year. I mean, our first couple of days, we started doing our kickoff outside during COVID and we continue that now, because it's just such a great vibe. We are, everyone's outside. We have breakfast together and we all go in the bleachers and do our little things. It's just a really good time. So teachers have been great, kids have been great. So we're just had a really good, positive start.
All righty. Super. Now the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. Jess, second?
Second.
Second, Michelle, all in favor? All righty.
All right.
Thank you.